Okay, here we go, guys, here we go. Tell Mike I said it.
Not much of an audience tonight.
Yeah, but they're important.
Must be on summer break.
They're important food and money.
I'm in.
River said not much of an audience tonight, I said food and money, oh, you're up.
Good afternoon, and welcome to this afternoon's meeting of the Fairmount School Board. It is Tuesday, June 12, 2018, and roll call is, we are all here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would move to approve the May 22, 2018, school board meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a green agenda.
I move to approve the June 12, 2018, school board meeting agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. No celebrations? Superintendent, you're on.
All right, well, here's the final update on the student enrollment for the year. We ended the year with 1,662 students, 816 at the high school and 846 at the elementary school. And just to remind everyone that we budgeted next year for 1,620 students because we have a larger senior class leaving and a smaller kindergarten class coming in. And so, we always budget conservatively, and as you can see, this year we budgeted for 1,665. And throughout the year, we had more than that until the last few weeks, and so...
But I mean, we're only, honestly, we're only down, I mean, we're actually up from last year, right? 1,661?
That's correct.
Am I reading that right?
That's correct.
So I mean, you know, there's opportunities, but...
We have pretty stable enrollment.
We do.
Yeah, we're fortunate.
And, you know, through the years, we have seen that, that we have been. Although we can't be lax at nothing, we need to keep hard our, you know, nose to the grindstone and keep working at it to keep our schools being the best it can be.
Very good. And if you look at your pink sheet, we have a couple of things coming up on the school board calendar. The, first of all, what's not on your calendar, but I think some of you have been notified, we're asking to have a staff welfare committee meeting this Thursday at 4:30 in the afternoon. And we'll be talking about a number of contracts and brief everybody on the update of where we are with contract negotiations. We have a number of individuals that we're working with. And then on Tuesday, July 10th is the next time our school board meets. And we'd like to have the superintendent evaluation done here in the business office. It's actually done in the business office at 3:30, and then we'll have the school board meeting here at 5 o'clock. And so, we're trying to get that all done, and so, I think a couple of you have already turned in your superintendent evaluation, and we appreciate that. If you wanted any help filling those out, let me know. And then...
So the evaluation will be before the meeting?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yep, that's a little bit different. In the past, we've had it after the meeting, but we'll have it before.
Well, I think we have done it before. I just, the way it's written, I just wanted to make sure, though, that it was before when it looks like it's following.
That's correct.
So...
Is it 3:30? Actually, yeah, that has changed. So it says, my notes, it says 3:30, business office. And then, just a quick update, I did give all the board members a copy of the one-page handout that I worked on just recently. But last Thursday and Friday, Bob Bodine, Andy Tredo, and I attended a two-day training session on what's called the Multi-Craft Core Curriculum. And there were nine different school districts that attended this training. It was held in New Ulm at the school district. And it was put on by Dr. Thomas Krieger, who's the Director of Research for the North America's Building Trades Unions. And this is a software program where students, if they, this is an online program, where if students go through 120 hours of training, then if they decide to join a trade union as an apprentice, like they want to go be an apprentice carpenter, or an electrician, or a plumber, then this knocks 120 hours off of their apprenticeship. And so, they actually get a, and in fact, if they complete 120 hours of this training, they're guaranteed that when they apply to become an apprentice of one of the trades, that they automatically get in. So, it's kind of an interesting program, so we really appreciate that.
So this would work within our own curriculum?
That is correct. And the cost of this, they were going to charge $75 per student that uses the curriculum. However, someone from the National Trade Union and someone from the Minnesota Trades Organization, they got together and they said, you know, they're looking for a pilot high school. And Fairmount was the first school to say, we'll be glad to pilot this in outstate Minnesota. There are schools in the metro that are already using this software, but we'd be the first one in greater Minnesota to do this. And if you look at the very bottom of this, one of the things that he talked about, he said, if you want some really good free economic financial literacy information, go to the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, which is run by the federal government. And so, I went online and I ordered 60 free copies of Your Money, Your Goals, a Financial Empowerment Tool Kit. This is a 336-page book that is free, and those are now being shipped to our school. 50 copies of a 24-page booklet called Behind on Bills and 22-page booklet, 50 copies of Debt Getting in Your Way. Now, the reason why I ordered these, number one, they're free, but number two, these can be used in...
Number one, right?
Did I mention they're free? Well...
Thanks for mentioning that they were free.
They were free. But, but we actually had copies of them to look at. This is outstanding stuff. And I think all of us know that, you know, we teach economics in high school, but we don't teach consumer economics. And one of the criticisms, I think, we get in education is that kids are coming out of high school without a lot of financial literacy. And so, these books can be used in either the economics classes, history classes, vocational classes, and business ed classes. So we'll get these here and we'll make them available to our high school staff and...
Is there a limit to how many you can order?
Well, this was the max you could order at any one time. So I ordered the max. And 60 works out, 60, 50, and 50 are pretty good because many of our classes at the high school are 25. Some are as high as 30, but this way, there'd at least be two copies. And this gentleman that taught us, Dr. Krieger, mentioned, he said, if anybody needs any Spanish versions of these, I've got a whole bunch back in my Washington DC office. So I contacted him on Friday night when I came back to town, and I sent him an email, and he said, I'll ship them out on Monday. He's going to send us 20 copies of these in Spanish that we'll make available to CER because CER works a lot with our new-to-country parents.
Wonderful.
So, this was really neat. And the software, we have access to it now. We actually have signs on and passwords that no charge for myself, Bob Bodine, and Andy. And this is really neat stuff, so...
So these, these required chapters and that, do they work within any, like, of our building trades or, I mean, does it...
Yes.
I mean, how are we planning to use it?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. This, the top part is really focused, I think, on construction. You know, so it's cement mixer, cement folks, it's iron workers, it's carpenters, it's plasterers...
Plumbers.
Painters, you know, really talking about commercial construction. The very part, the very bottom is more, these are electives, and you have to choose at least 36 out of the 50 hours to qualify for this 120. But, and the one I really liked, I really delved into the financial responsibility. I just thought that was just, that's a, that's a great 4-8 hour of training.
You know, it's great stuff, and incorporating it into our existing classes is one idea. I mean, but it, it may create some obstacles for doing both at the same time, you know, the coursework. You know, one night, another idea would be just create another course.
It is.
And, and give credit just to go through this, this curriculum. You know, so student...
Right.
So students can get a credit or two, or whatever we determine.
Well, the perfect, in fact, if you look at this, 120 hours equals two semester credits.
Okay.
Because 60 hours is what we require for a semester credit at our high school. But if you look at the very top part, basic math for construction, this is really good stuff.
But we, we already have that construction materials that we have purchased in the past.
That is correct.
And I mean, so does that work along with this, or...
It certainly will, because this is online versus the other ones are textbook, and so they're both. But that's right, there are classes in the metro, and here's one of the sad parts, you know, we just had this training last week. Well, as I mentioned to Dr. Krieger, because he looked around, he said, how many of you are willing to implement this next school year? No one raised their hands. I said, we'll, we'll try it, but, he said, but please remember, all of our scheduling is done. Our master schedule has been built. All the students have already registered for classes for the upcoming school year. So to add a new class this late in the year, we're really talking about the 1920s school year to be realistic, to do a class. But we can at least play with this and pilot, I should say, not play. We can pilot the software this year in many classes, but I think you're right. This would be a great class to take, a financial literacy class, an apprenticeship program.
Can we check with the Department of Ed and see if the basic math for construction actually can meet standards to count as an actual math class towards a graduation requirement?
We sure will. We'll do that.
Because it wouldn't be very hard to make that into a, a full semester class.
That's correct. And they gave us a list of school districts in the metro that are already using this, and they are granting credit. And so, I think that's a real good possibility.
Okay.
Good idea.
So do you have, like, a sample from those school districts of how their, you know, the class works? I mean...
Not yet, but I'm going to follow through on that this summer.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, this is really good training, it was free.
I mean, I think, I think it's wonderful.
Did I mention it was free?
Yeah.
The training was free also.
Well, because you signed up and volunteered, correct?
Well, no, it was, not, the curriculum was free for us for a while, but, no, the training was free because that was a takeoff really of when we went to the school board convention last January, and we attended those roundtable discussions.
Right.
And then...
And this is, this is from that, those roundtable discussions?
It is. And also, we brought those folks that were at the roundtable at the school board convention, we brought them to a Little Ten, meeting with the principals and the superintendents. And so, many of these schools that were here at that training are part of the Little Ten. So it's the New Ulms, the St. Peters, us, you know, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
All right.
So...
Done. We're ready for Sue.
Okay.
We're ready for...
A donation?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yes, in Appendix A, we have a resolution for acceptance of gifts. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Verlis Burkhardt donated use of a personal airplane for 10 hours of flight time for a student enrolled in the high school course, Principles of Aviation. This donation is valued at $1,500. Be it resolved by Fairmount Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
I will second, you go ahead.
Second.
Okay, I will do a roll call. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes?
That's wonderful.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Now, Sue.
Tonight on the agenda, we have the May 2018 Treasurers Report, Single Checks, Wire Transfers from May 17th to June 7th, and the payment of the June 12 bills. So I'll begin with the May 2018 Treasurers Report that you have. It lists all the different funds and the dollars in each fund. As has been on here the last time, the debts or the capital expenditure looks like it's in the negative, and that's just because at year-end, once I'm working on year-end entries with the audit, is when I move the capital funds from the general fund to Fund 5. And then you'll notice on debt service that the bond proceeds held in escrow, that that amount is larger than it was on the last one. And so, we have the 2008A and 2009A refunding proceeds held in escrow, and those will be paid off in February. And on the flip side, you have the expenditure report as of May 2018. In the column that says the 2018 revised budget, that's the budget that will be approved tonight. So total expenditure is $26,501,000. Year-to-date, we've spent just under $21 million, or just under 79% of the budget, which does make sense even though we're at the end of the school year. Looking at the general fund, we're at 76.5%. And our teachers, the way they're paid, they're paid right now at 75%. So it makes sense that we're at this level. Okay, and then in the bottom section, we have the wires and transfers from May 17th to June 7th. In that listing, you have the net payroll for May and all the payroll taxes. And then we had two different advances, June advances from Martin County for our levy dollars that are listed there. And then on the very bottom, we have the payroll dispersments for May of $1,100,000, just about $60,000. Any questions? So we can go to the single checks. Just one to bring to your attention, check number 61191 made out to AP programs. For the AP testing, there were 63 exams that were taken this spring by our students. And the reason we had single checks, and we had three weeks between board meetings, and so then it seems like we oftentimes will need to do a single check run, looking at due dates and to avoid late fees, things like that. Then tonight, Judy handed you a P card register. On the wires and transfers, the dollar amount for the P card was listed there. Just a couple to bring to your attention. The check made out, or the payment to Minnesota DNR is for a 4th grade field trip. The payment to Washington Pavilion was for a 3rd grade field trip. The payment to St. Cloud State University was for seven of our teachers that are getting the ELL licensure, and that's their, some tuition and books for them. Any questions on the P card register? We can move to the checks dated today, June 12. So a few to bring to your attention there. Check number 61231 made out to Green Mill, that's for the senior banquet. That's paid for with student activity funds that the seniors raise. Check number 61254, Minnesota Historical Society, it's a 4th grade field trip. Check number 61258 made out to Noble County Historical Society, that's a 3rd grade field trip. Check number 61265 made out to Region 2A Minnesota State High School League. This is for a section, girls softball gate receipts, and subsection track gate receipts. So when we host a section or a subsection at our facility and we collect the gate receipt, then we need to pass that on. Any questions on that register? Or any other reports? Julie and I did review the bills prior to the board meeting.
Yes, we did. Welcome back to Sue.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions on that, I would like to make a motion to approve the May 2018 Treasurers Report, the single checks, wire transfers for May 17th to June 7th, 2018, and payment of the June 12, 2018 bills.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the 2017-2018 revised budget. Each year, we bring the budget to the board three times. In June, prior to the start of the school year, it's called the preliminary budget. By law, the board needs to approve a preliminary budget before July 1. Then in the fall, when all staff are in place for the school year and after negotiations are finished, we have what we call the adopted budget. And then this time of year, we do a revised budget. So you have in front of you Appendix B, which is the revised budget. In reviewing this revised budget, I'll compare it somewhat the adopted budget that you approved on June 12. Or, excuse me, December 12, 2017. In the general fund, changes have been made to the revenues and expenditure budgets. Bottom line is, we're projecting to have about $133,000 less in the general fund on assigned fund balance at the end of the 1718 school year. On the expenditure side, I needed to increase budgets for payments for educational purposes for things like PSEO, contracted student placement, tuition for students receiving services elsewhere. In the technology and curriculum area, budgets were increased by quite a bit on the expenditure side. This was mainly for planned expenditures that we're purchasing now in the 1718 school year. So we're all ready for the 1819 school year. And then on the revenue and expenditure side, I did change budget some for the title grants. Overall, we're projecting to the, in the year, in the unassigned area at $3,102,000. This is a little less than two months of operating expenditures, about 56 days. Total general fund revenues are $18,938,000. Forty, 14.2% are from local dollars, 3.1% are federal dollars, and the balance, 82.7, come from the state of Minnesota. Total general fund expenditures, $20,038,000. That does exceed revenues by almost 1.1 million. We are spending several dollars in assigned fund balances, including staff development, literacy, district technology, curriculum and technology, that those dollars, that we've assigned those and set those aside. But we are overspending in our unassigned area. We're projecting about $345,000. Okay, moving to food service, the budget has changed slightly, about $20,000, and this is for the purchase of a new steamer, but we're still projected to increase the fund balance by almost $39,000. Looking at community service, there are very few changes. I'm looking to end the year with, in the unassigned and CER area, of just under $33,000, ABE just under $12,000, ECFE a little less than $93,000, and school readiness, a little less than $68,000. In the capital fund, the biggest change here is for the LED lighting project. That was, is in the long-term facility maintenance area. Looking at that line, we will end the year in the negative by about $385,000. That fund balance is allowed to go into the negative, and then we have levy authority in upcoming years to bring that back to the positive. In the debt service, there were quite a few changes there as we sold those bonds back in August for the refunding of the 2009A bonds, and those proceeds will be in escrow until February. And so, the budget was changed to reflect the sale of those bonds. Student activity revenues and expenditures vary each year due to activities that each group is doing, and so those budgets have been changed to reflect current activity. Total revenues in all funds, about $31.5 million. Expenditures, about $26.5 million. So we have more revenues, but most of that is in that debt service area. So this was reviewed with Operations Committee on June 6th, and they do recommend approval. Do you have any questions for me?
Motion to a vote.
Sue moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. Next, we have the 1819 preliminary budget. You have that on Appendix C. So prior to the start of any school year, as I mentioned, the school board must approve a preliminary budget. And we did review this with Operations Committee on June 6th. And so, work begins on the preliminary budget in the spring. Projections and assumptions are made regarding revenues, including enrollment. On the expenditure side, expenditures for employee contracts, staffing, utilities, insurance, transportation. You just try to go through and try to hit most things and, and see what you, you know, see what we think we need to do there. This year, and for the past few years, we do something in the office called the plan. So we look at the retirements and resignations, and administration works to come up with the plan that will be cost-neutral, but most benefit our students in the district. And so, even though there's been changes there, that wasn't like an increase to the budget or anything. So the FY19 preliminary budget document begins where our projected end-of-the-year balances from Appendix B that you just approved. The beginning fund balance in the general fund for all the areas, the assigned, the committed, the unassigned, is projected to be about $6.7 million. Revenue is $19,307,000. Expenditures, $20,607,000. We're projected to end the year at about $5.4 million. The unassigned portion of this is projected to be about $2.5 million, which is about one and a half months' operating expense, or about 45 days. So we are looking at having that unassigned fund balance go down about $540,000. As Superintendent Brown mentioned, we're budgeting for 1,620 students for the 1819 school year. We graduated more students who were planning in for kindergarten, and then not quite as many students in the parochial area coming in. You know, so hopefully, we'll have a lot of... You know, so hopefully we'll have a lot more students in that, and this fixture will look better. Hopefully we'll end the year better, and the beginning balances will be better. But we'll know more in late October, early November, once the audit's complete, you know, how we end this current school year. On the revenue side, I increased the formula by two percent. On the expenditure side, I increased wages and benefits, an estimated amount for the unsettled contracts. We increased our payments to Southern Plain after we took into consideration that the pairs will be fair amount employees, and we did a two percent increase for our contract to travel to Minnesota Motor Bus. I looked at the utility budgets, and they looked fine for the eighteen-nineteen school year, so I didn't have to make a change there. Technology and curriculum budgets were changed based on plans approved at the cabinet level, and budgets were changed for the soccer and hockey agreements. In this fall, I'll continue to work on the budget, including a review of actual students that are enrolled in September, and the report that you see at every board meeting, you know, we'll watch that for a few board meetings, and then we'll decide, you know, with that adopted budget, what, how many students to use in that budget. And then at that time, we should all of our, have all of our contract settlements and all of our staffing, and so probably bring that back to the board around the same time as audit report. Moving to food service, this is the preliminary budget. It's been updated based on, with working with Chartwells, with Travis, and with Katie. We're looking to increase the fund balance by about fifteen thousand dollars. It includes an anticipated increase in the federal reimbursement. It includes staff changes, no change in lunch prices, which is upcoming on the agenda, and increase for food and supply budgets. We are planning for a large expenditure, actually this summer, it's a freezer replacement, and it's about sixty thousand dollars, and that is allowed in Fund Two, and we feel the fund balance can handle that. And so that's in this expenditure budget for the eighteen-nineteen school year. I'm looking at community service. The preliminary budget is basically the revised budget with some assumptions made on wages and benefits. And I'll continue to work with Ronnie and Michelle this fall on the budgets. And then operating capital, this is based on the long-term facility maintenance projects and capital expenditure and technology projects that we have at this point. I'm going to be meeting with Tyler probably later this week or next week, and looking at doing, updating the long-term facility maintenance projects, and then that will come back to the board in July. So I believe that area may be changing some based on what he comes forward with. In debt service, this is based on actual scheduled payments and levy dollars for the eighteen-nineteen school year, and then paying off the principal of those two bonds that are held in escrow. So that's why you can see in debt service that the expenditures are over twenty-one million, so that's paying off the principal interest plus the principal of those bonds held in escrow. The trust and agency and student activity are the same as the revised budget, are very close. And we're looking at total revenues with the preliminary budget, twenty-four, just about twenty-four million, eight hundred thousand, and on the expenditure side, about forty-four million, eight hundred thousand. Those big changes in that debt service area, and then in the general fund, using some assigned fund balances, and then the unassigned area going back. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Okay, so, take a motion.
Motion to approve the 2018-2019 preliminary budget.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, no old business, new business, Nicole, meal prices.
Yeah, as Sue alluded to, then we have looked over the meal prices for the 2018-19 school year, and along with the formula from the federal government, we determined that our school lunch prices will stay the same as they were for the previous, previous year. At the elementary school lunches, two dollars and eighty cents. At the junior, senior high school, it's two dollars and ninety cents, and the adult meal is three dollars and sixty-five cents. All breakfasts are free for students, and for adults, they're a dollar seventy-five. And there is no reduced meal price. It's either it's a paying price, or it's free. So with there, with that being that there are no increases recommended for the 2018-19 school year, I move to approve the meal prices.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Julie?
Yes, we have a couple agreements with the Southern Plains Educational Cooperative. Sue Nelson has worked with Sarah Middlestat, the director of Southern Plains, to renew both of these agreements. The IT agreement, let me see, which one is first? Technology is second, so. The phone one is first, so. Anyway, the IT agreement changes slightly with some reduction in technology time for spec. And then there were some additional phone costs that were included due to installation of a new phone system this summer, and because the cost will be hopefully for just the one year, because we'll be combining and moving all the offices together into the Lincoln School Building, there'll just be a one-time cost there, so. So then I would make a motion to approve the 2018-19 payroll agreement with Southern Plains Educational Co-op.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, Julie?
Yep, and then, oh, you know, actually, that was backwards, but anyway. The cost of service, the payroll agreement, I should have said that one first, was reduced from forty-five percent to service time to thirty percent with a total time not to exceed thirty-five percent. So, and that's just because less time will be needed for the spec payroll and benefits, so. So anyway, they're kind of lumped together, but I would make a motion to unanimously approve the 2018-19 technology agreement with Southern Plains Educational Cooperative.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Julie. Okay, so Lincoln School, Joe and Julie?
Yeah, well, basically, as maybe you've read in the headlines and that, with, you know, all the districts who are involved in the Southern Plains Cooperative, Blue Earth, Truman, USC, Martin County West, Fairmont, a missing one, I think. Grenada Huntley East Chain. And all those boards had to approve the, the new agreement to purchase Lincoln School and that, and Truman has not approved with it. So now we have to go back and redo these agreements. I would be recommending that we continue with the same as we had before. Actually, it'll kind of work out kind of the best for Fairmont, because there will be some differences in, in some of the financial numbers. I don't have everything right in front of me right now, but, but I think it'll, it'll actually be a benefit for our district to do this without Truman. Truman is looking at going to another district, another cooperative district for their special education needs, going far to the north, like to the New All Mary, I believe, so. So we'll be looking at that, and we will have a meeting tomorrow night, Southern Plains Educational Cooperative will, and then we will be approving that then at that time, so.
And so basically, what we're asking the board to do tonight is to revote on three agreements, and this, and the only difference between the first time we voted last month and this month is that instead of having six districts, we have five.
So is it official then? Truman's no longer a voting member?
That's correct. They passed a resolution to pull out of Southern Plains at the end of next.
Next school year. You have to give them a year's notice before you can officially do that, you know, withdrawal. And so we have approved the agreement that they will, you know, they will withdraw next year, and we will hopefully then keep us, like, our things going so we can keep working on this Lincoln School and get things, you know, keep things moving that way, so we can keep that, keep those kids taken care of there, so.
And a couple of, a couple of weeks ago, all six of the superintendents that represent the original six districts met at the Southern Plains, and we all agreed on this to, we all agreed to let Truman go a year from now, and, and they basically, well, the agreement that they would then pass a resolution to pull out of Southern Plains, so that we can go ahead with the project, because it's very timely. We're, we're at the point that if this dragged on too much longer, we wouldn't be totally rehabbed before September of 2019.
We wouldn't be able to, we'd have another year probably into the Winnebago Building, so we're really getting down on our timeline with that.
And there's real concerns about the future of the Winnebago Building. We don't want to put a lot of money into it to keep it going. We might be able to get one more year out of their furnace, but we've been told two years is a real stretch, and so.
We're hoping it, it holds through, knock on wood.
We need a resolution passed, yes.
So, let's see, where's the?
Appendix G is the resolution.
Okay, so.
And Julie, I think you could propose it, and then just read the very bottom, therefore be it resolved.
The resolution approving the concept of consolidating educational programs of the Southern Plains Educational Cooperative at one site in Fairmont, and then now be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, number?
Two-seven.
Two-seven.
Five-two.
Five-two. As follows, the school board hereby approves and supports the concept of relocating and consolidating the educational district's programs and services to one site located in Fairmont, Minnesota. The administration of the cooperative is hereby authorized to take any and all necessary and appropriate action, develop a feasible plan to relocate and consolidate the cooperative's programs and services.
And, and Joe, this, this doesn't really increase Fairmont's share or any of the other district's share that much as far as the money that is going to be pooled together. It's a pretty small amount, isn't it?
It might be a little bit of an increase, but it actually looks like it's going down.
It might be a decrease, because, you know, we're busing to Winnebago, we're paying staff to go with students to Winnebago. I mean, we just, we maybe won't know exactly until.
But it won't be, just because there's only five schools now, not six, that'll be contributing to the fund, it's still not a very big.
No.
It's not.
Truman is really kind of a small district.
Well, here's the other part of that. The, the, the five districts in this co-op are financially secure. Truman is not. And the Truman bond rating was so low, it was causing the interest rates to go high on the bond to fix up the building. With them out of the picture, the interest rates actually came down. So we might actually see a savings. I just want to point out one more thing before we vote. We did get a phone call last week from City Hall, because there's been some complaints about the physical condition of the Lincoln School. It's not been well-kept. The owner, who lives out of state, hasn't been maintaining the building, there's some broken windows, the yard hasn't been kept up, and of course, people in the community, some people think it's still our building, and it's not. But the reason why we really want to expedite this now is that we'll start the process of getting that building rehabbed, having someone be responsible to take it over. And in all honesty, it's kind of an eyesore right now, but I'm convinced it's going to be great for the north side of Fairmont, it's going to be great for our kids.
Okay, so, have a resolution?
Second.
Second. We'll do a roll call. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. So now, do we have?
We have two revised joint powers agreements to approve. And Julie, I don't think you have copies of those, but we didn't give copies to everybody, but they're identical to what we voted on before. The only difference is that there's five schools rather than six. Yeah, yeah, I have, I have the packets here, but again, these were in last month's packet. We decided not to.
I have the one, I have the minutes, but I mean, it's a, I'm not going to read through it.
No, it's identical, the, the agreements are identical, except for there's five schools instead of six.
There's only twenty-some pages apiece, so.
Right. I think you can just, I think you can just move both of them.
So let's, so the educational facility joint powers agreement, I make a motion to unanimously approve the spec educational facility joint powers agreement as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then?
We did the joint powers. Am I, I have another one here. What am I, what am I looking at here? Did I read the wrong one again?
That's okay.
Guys, I am, I shouldn't take any time off from board meetings, because I'm.
Yeah, you read, you just passed E.
I did E, didn't I? So we want to do the joint powers agreement, so we'll make a motion to approve the spec joint powers agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well done.
Thank you. With all your help.
Nicole?
Yes, each June, we need to go back and approve the revised school calendar for the previous school year, so it reflects what we actually participated in as far as education goes. You'll find in Appendix H, the revised school calendar, with the snow and inclement weather days highlighted in light blue. Unusual this year, they were, half of them were in April. But anyway, with that, I move to approve the revised 2017-2018 school calendar as presented in Appendix H.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And rental fee schedule, Dan?
As at the Operations Committee meeting that we attended last week, we looked at our rental rates per hour, which we have divided up into four different groups as far as the type of group that asks for the facility and what particular room that they want, be it the high school gym, elementary gym, performing arts center, classrooms, or commons. And the Operations Committee recommends a five-dollar increase for each of those, basically due to the fact that we have increased the salary of the custodians. So to cover that increased cost, that would be the change. Five, just five dollars across the board for each one of those. Certain groups don't pay any fee, but for the ones that do, I make a motion to approve the 2018-19 rental fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dan, again?
We also looked at the extracurricular participation fees for all student activities. For everything but football, the regular fee to participate is one hundred and thirty dollars, and for reduced income, it's forty dollars. Football is five dollars higher, cheerleading is ten dollars less, and all junior high athletics, the fees are seventy dollars for regular and twenty dollars for reduced. And the fees for fine arts are smaller, they're sixty dollars for the musical play, knowledgeable and math league, seventy dollars for speech, fifty dollars for all junior high fine arts other than the reduced fee of twenty dollars if you have reduced income. The one change for 2018-19 will be that the school is fully funding both the soccer and hockey programs now as, per our agreement of, I believe, four years ago now. The fee for soccer will be the same as for the other sports, one hundred and thirty regular, forty dollars reduced, and the fee for hockey will remain the same as it was through the association, three hundred and fifty dollars for regular fee and forty dollars for reduced. I make a motion to approve the participation fees as offered in Appendix J.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And one more, Dan?
Also, we looked at the activities admission fees. Last year, students can get into games free with a pass with their student ID. Adults can pay either seven dollars per game, or they can buy an annual pass for one hundred dollars, and senior citizens can pay either five dollars or get an annual pass for fifty-five dollars. And we recommend no changes in the 2018-19 costs for admission fees. So I offer a motion to approve as shown in Appendix K.
Second.
All those in favor?
Question yet before we, I thought we had discussed, or we, maybe that maybe came up, but I thought we were going to maybe not charge any students for a fee to get in, or?
We actually talked about that.
You did talk about that?
We did talk about it, but.
I say yes.
We, we think, we think the Blue Earth kids ought to pay. No, I know we talked about it and, you know, Julie, good question, but the operations committee, if you look back at what we just almost voted on, the, we wanted to make it very, we want to make a kind of a statement to the community that there are no changes in food prices for next year, in participation fees for next year, or admission fees for next year. You know, our, our school district is in good shape. We know there's, you know, there's still many families in our community which are, have challenging financial situations. And we felt it was very important to send a clear message in the community to, to just freeze things as they are. So, that's why we said no changes.
So, just, we're just leaving as it is with, through discussion in the future and, okay?
That's correct.
Okay, sounds good, that's fine.
But I think we should discuss that at the earliest opportunity because I think we kicked it around the past.
We have talked about it. The problem is, I, operations makes that decision and I'm not on that committee. So, I just was curious where the discussion went, so.
We'll look for, look, look to further discussion.
Yeah, no, it's fine with me, I just was curious.
Good question, huh? Okay, so, we have a motion and a second? And I think we said aye.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Dell, okay, thank you.
And I think we said aye, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I, if, I didn't, I was asking another question, but I'll say aye now, so.
Okay, Dan, lead in water.
Appendix L is where you find the management plan for lead in water. The operations committee is also recommending the board approve this management plan, under which the water is tested for lead every five years. Water was last tested for lead in two thousand fourteen and is scheduled to be retested again in the fall of two thousand nineteen. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
I would just like to say, my son went to college in Flint and the college led the charge on this. So, I'm glad that we have something in place and that we have the wherewithal to protect our kids and check this. So, I'm thankful for that and the work done with it.
We had, we, earlier this winter, we had discussed it, I know it was after a board meeting or about the lead water. I mean, it was kind of a, I think it was in one of our staff welfare meetings, but it had just been one of the headlines the governor had talked about, about the, you know, lead and that. And, and it was amazing, I believe it was Kair Levin who actually did the investigation where they said how many school districts were not testing for this. And so, happened to be the next day, we had this meeting and we asked Superintendent Brown, you know, when was our last? And, and I was just pleased that we had just done it in two thousand fourteen. And we were not, and I know when we went to the website, you could look it up and that, but there was no, Fairmont wasn't on there that I could find and that. So, I mean, I don't think it was a real complete list and that. But I'm glad to hear that we, we had done it and we're right on schedule as what the recommendation is, so.
And we were asked about it and we did have a great response when we have it in place. So, I'm glad that this work was done.
And I know Tyler Garrison and before him, Dave Turnberg did a, have a, a plan of, of, you know, just the overall safety for everything, but, you know, they also keep an eye on things like radon testing and any other health hazards that, that might be a problem. So, they're, they're on top of it.
All those things are, I mean, and then they kind of circle through the information, technology areas and stuff, you know, as they highlight stuff like that. So, it is just great to know that we've got a plan and that we've got a great schools for our kids, good, safe schools for our kids.
And Dan, you mentioned radon testing. You know, by law, schools have to test every ten years, but we've decided to test every five years for radon. And so, that was a change and we talked about that at operations, that's in the operations minutes, I believe. By the way, back to the lead testing, when we did test in two thousand fourteen, we did find two faucets that needed to be replaced. And because every single faucet, every place where you draw water from, whether it's in a drinking fountain or in the bathroom or in science labs, every single faucet has to be tested. And we did find a couple in, in the science rooms and that, that had to be replaced. And those were replaced immediately and then they were retested again and it was clear. So, it was actually the faucet that was in fault. So, yeah, we're in great shape, we have good water.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Utility easement. This is a add-on to our agenda.
It is, no one is listed, let me talk about this for a little bit. This was a, a proposal that has come to us from Lindsay Price, who's the head of the economic development here in town. And if you remember, the school district owns what we refer to as the Hunt Farm, which is north of the fairgrounds. And if you envision for a minute an aerial shot of the fairgrounds and you go up to the interstate and you look left in that southwest corner, so the land south of the interstate but west of the highway, that's land that the city is looking at developing. But to do that, to make it development-ready, they need to get utilities out to that area. And so, this utility easement that is being asked for by the city, it affects our land, it affects the fair board, it affects another farm. It simply is permitting a, a utility easement to get utilities, water and electrical and maybe sewer out to that area. It'll have very, very little impact on the Hunt Farm. It may take up a ten-foot by ten-foot square if they have to do a pumping station or something there. But I'm a big fan of this because if we can get that land to be development-ready, so if a factory or a, another store wants to give and develop there, we're, we're ready to go. So, it puts us as a great advantage.
Okay, so, someone want to make a motion to approve this?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve granting the city of Fairmont an easement for the purpose of constructing, operating and maintaining public utilities above, on, across or under the district's Hunt Farm property.
Second.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to personnel. Dell, employment?
Following the retirement of Craig Johnston as a food service custodian, we advertised for the position and received thirteen applications. After review of those, Tyler Garrison is recommending that Kevin Gertz be hired for the position. Kevin has worked for the past twenty-nine years as the assistant bakery manager at Hy-Vee Food Stores. So, I would move for the, I would move to approve the employment of Kevin Gertz as a food service custodian effective June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen at a salary step of one.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And resignation, Dell?
We received a resignation from Lynn Rosa, custodian effective August seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Lynn has been employed with the district since March of two thousand seventeen. And I would move to approve the resignation of Lynn Rosa effective August seventeenth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we received the resignation of Cindy Martin's, early childhood coordinator, effective June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Cindy has been employed in the position since two thousand and eleven. And I would move to approve the resignation of Cindy Martin's, early childhood coordinator, effective June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second it.
Question. She's just retiring that position, she'll still be a teacher?
No, actually Cindy is resigning that position. Her and Dave are looking at moving north.
Okay.
Okay. But they've not sold their house yet. And we do, we will have an early childhood family education opening in January due to a pregnancy leave. And Cindy, when we talked last week, she said that if they're still in town, that she would be glad to come in and be the long-term sub.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so.
Do, take it, did you vote on that?
No, we did not.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, contract settlements, Julie?
Yes. Okay. We have two contract settlements. Should we do these separately? Or you want to do them all as one?
Oh, let's see here.
Let's just do, let's do the manager of information systems. It's a two-year contract for two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty. With a fifty cent increase per hour per step each year of the agreement. Life insurance increased to fifty thousand and carryover vacation to January first of the following school year. So, I would make a motion to approve the contract settlement for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty school years for the management information systems.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the second contract, technology specialist. And this is another two-year contract, it's usually our, our normal rotation. That includes a fifty cent increase per hour per year of the agreement. Life insurance increased to fifty thousand and forty, four oh three B match increased from five hundred to a thousand and also carryover the vacation to January first of the following school year. So, I'd make a motion to approve for the technology specialist, the contract settlement for the two thousand eighteen, twenty school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One more?
No.
Oh, no, no, try it. We, it's going to be held, okay?
Did we approve more that I didn't have here?
No, no, you're, you're doing great.
We're at appendix O. So, I don't know how great we're doing.
This is a lot, we haven't had that many for quite a while. And we're still under an hour.
Okay, let's move it.
Killing trees.
Okay, board committee reports, ASA negotiations, Nicole?
Uh, we met and did negotiations and we're continuing.
Okay.
Yes.
Short and sweet.
Yes.
We're going to do operations committee first and then I'll come back to math and science meeting. So, Dan, you want to comment on operations?
Well, our operations meeting from last Wednesday had about sixteen items on it. We talked about a fire alarm system, the lead and water testing. Sue went through the revised and preliminary budgets with us. We talked about the food service renewal. We're in the second of our three-year contract with Chart Wells. And we talked about the meal prices as we approved unchanged for next year. We've got an update on food servants agreements with the parochial schools here in town. We agreed to discontinue offering student accident insurance because only two families had bought it and we didn't need board action on that. We discussed the rental fees, the five-dollar per hour increase, participation admission fees, the spec agreements that we looked at here tonight. Got an update on our auditing services for next year, there'll be a five hundred dollar increase in that, which is offset by a reduction in costs for workers' comp and property insurance. And we also talked about disposing of some excess property. I know there's going to be an auction on Friday, which is, has some of our things on it and it has some of the cities and the counties, I believe, that they're going to have up at Winnebago Softball Diamonds on Friday afternoon at five thirty.
Is it Winnebago or I think it's out here at the school district is where the signs are?
It's the parking lot of the softball complex.
Oh, that softball complex.
That one.
Yeah, that's where I see the signs.
Not the one up by the city, the one by the aquatic park.
Bring your kids over to the water park and then come over and buy a lot of stuff. You talked about, we did talk at operations, Dan, I remember. There are three wood laves that we no longer use anymore, they're out of date and they're not up to OSHA standards that are on the auction block. And we were in contact, Grenada Hunt East Chain had contacted us to see if we would be willing to donate them to their school. And when we checked with the auditor, the auditor suggested that we not do that for liability purposes. But at one point, we were willing to maybe sell that to them for a dollar. But the auditor said, you should do that, you really need to make it available to anybody who wants to buy it. And so, if they want, if, if Grenada wants to purchase those, they should come to the auction.
And purchase it for a dollar or whatever the, yeah, okay.
Right, right.
Okay.
I'd like to comment, at our board, at our committee meeting, we had a gentleman from the public come and he's, and has employed, he's retired now, but he was employed as a security person for the company that he worked for and he just wanted to talk to our school about security options. And I, I really appreciate him taking the time to come, talk to our committee and encourage other members of the community, if you have concerns or interests or anything that you think the school could benefit from your expertise or, or your research, to please contact Superintendent Brown. And we'd love to hear from you in our committee meetings. And it's important for us to have feedback from the community because our schools are, are here to serve our community ultimately.
And just an update on that too, and I think it's in my summary packet, but the legislation that did pass the legislature this year, the legislature and the governor did approve twenty-five million dollars for school security grants. And half of that money has to be spent on greater Minnesota schools and half of it has to be spent on metro schools. And IEA has been in contact with me. They have offered to help us write a grant. And a school can earn, can obtain approximately up to five hundred thousand dollars for a security project. And I just received an email from the Minnesota Department of Education last night that the application for this grant will come out in July and it's due the last week in August. And so, we'll be working with the engineers. We already have a plan, you know, we've looked at a plan on what it would cost to put a new friend in on the, a high school to make it more secure because as you know, our high school was built in the early seventies when we didn't have the issues that we have today. And if there's anything we can do to make our building a little more secure, we're all in favor of that. And if we can get a grant from the legislature to do that. And, but I think we're in great shape because we have a plan already to go. And we, we certainly are going to apply for a grant.
We've looked at that for years, that entrance into the, you know, so, you know, that'd just be wonderful if we can get that nailed down and, and get some help there with that fund.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank Chris Ingleby, who is the Cardinal Connections Coordinator, for organizing the service day that we had at the high school again. And we also had T-shirts this year. And there were many people, businesses in the community that came together to sponsor those. And they were the MCSAP Coalition in Yoko, Sweet Financial Services, Ad Manufacturing Bank Midwest, C and B Operations, Coligan Water, a Fairmont DeWar Electric, First Farmers and Merchants, Hawkins Chevrolet, Mayo Clinic Health Systems, Militella Motors, Profinium and State Bank of Fairmont. So, there were a lot of businesses that really supported us this year. And it was nice, they're bright, safety orange shirts, so kids were safe and.
Um, I worked that day and it was really kind of fun because a couple of gals I was working with looked out the windows and she goes, why is there all these orange shirts on the school grounds? And I said, I told her about this project the kids were working on. And I mean, that they were through both communities of Ceylon and Fairmont and they were helping, you know, and all. And we saw letters to the editor for people thanking the students for the help that they provided and. But I mean, it was, it was noticed by a lot of people and that really helps, helps to keep the kids safe. But it also made quite an awareness of what, what the day was for, so.
And there was also almost five thousand dollars raised through a penny war and some bracelets for some of our staff members who are dealing with health issues right now. And so, I thought that was pretty incredible too, of our students and staff to be so supportive of their colleagues and their teachers.
Thank you.
Very nice.
So, lastly, I'll report on a meeting that Joe and I attended with the math and science teachers at the junior and senior high school. As Julie mentioned earlier tonight, we're always trying to do better, you know, in, in every aspect. And, and so, one area that we hope to try to, try to make better, create a better learning experience for the students is, is with the math and science disciplines. And, and right now, there isn't a lot of collaboration between the two departments. And, and, and I think math and science go so, they, they go hand in hand. And, and I think this not only benefits students that are, this will not only benefit students that are college-bound because we have a number of students that just graduated that are, you know, thinking about health careers or engineering careers. But it's also the, the students in the, in the trades. Because if you're going to be a carpenter, you better know how to handle fractions and angles and geometry. And so, so we've had these conversations with math and science before and we're hoping to, that they will come back to the, to the board with some concrete ideas of how the, how, beginning even next year, how they might implement some, you know, some innovations to try to, you know, make it a better and more effective learning experience for the, for the students. And it's something that the board has been, you know, knocking around for, you know, probably most of this past year. And so, we will.
So, can you tell me how it was received? I mean, was it more or less, you know, an open discussion? Was it?
Well, actually.
A big suggestion? Or, I mean, how was that?
Well, actually, you know, my time was limited, you know, I, I had a half hour and so I presented. and so I presented, uh, you know, some thoughts, um, you know, from the, you know, that we've had at the board, and, and then Joe and I, uh, took our leave and, and turned the, the conversation over to, uh, Kim Ness and Andy Tradeau to, you know, continue the, the conversation with the, the teachers.
And Jim and Michelle, all four of the principals.
Oh, right, and the counselors, yeah.
All four of the principals were there.
And so, because, because you were looking at both buildings.
Yes, and, um, you know, I think the, the message, I think, Dr. Rodriguez and I wanted to tell the teachers is, you know, break down the silos, think outside of the box, work together, collaborate, because there's not a job that, all of us are aware of the jobs that we all do, that none of us work by ourselves. We all need collaboration, we all need communication, we all need creativity, we all need those, those C-words that are so important. How was it received initially? I think, uh, some of the, uh, more veteran teachers were probably a little, maybe offended that, you know, we're doing great things, um, we're doing good things, and, uh, but-
But we can always get better.
Right. Well, when you look at other schools, that's the thing, I mean, we're, we're down here in south central Minnesota, you know, we're kind of, we're not part of the metro, we're not part of Des Moines, but the bottom line is, when you look at what other schools are doing by, you know, departments working together and working across curriculum areas, well, one example was in the, uh, the social studies and English departments working this year on the History Day project, you know, it was the first year that they did that, but good collaboration between language arts and the, uh, social studies, but, um, but I do know, I'm, I am aware that, um, the, you know, Mr., uh, huh, Mr. Johnson is going to be teaching a couple of ma, of, uh, construction classes next year, and he's already talked to, uh, the welding academy, uh, they are going to do a joint project to build an ice house, and to do that, they need the welding, uh, academy to build the foundation, so they can have this ice house be put on wheels and make it available for, and I understand there's already people that even want to buy this already before it's designed, and it's going to be kind of a super ice house.
Good for them.
Details to follow. Me, I go to Long John Silver's, I don't go on the ice house, but, uh, the, uh, but-
But that, that's, that's exactly what, what I, what I'd like to hear.
Right.
You know, I think of, um, and we've all talked about, um, back at, at the school board convention when we met with the young man who was teaching, um, the building trades up there, and how he worked with the geometry teacher, and how they were working collaboratively together and building this mini-house or-
Tiny house.
The tiny house, and, I mean, it was just amazing, and I can only imagine that we could do the same thing, um, you know, but you just need to work together, and, like you said, break down some of the silos and, and think out of the box, and, you know, just what can we do to, you know, make us all a better school, a better, you know, education-wise for our kids, and so.
And one of, one of my, uh, important messages to the, the teachers and the staff was that, you know, the board needs to hear from them, you know, what they, what do they need in time and resources to be able to, you know, collaborate with their, with their colleagues, and, you know, because there is a concern, you know, that, you know, there's a lot of time pressures on the faculty, you know, meetings and, and, you know, and time away from the, the most important thing that they need to do, which is collaborate with each other and, and spend time with the, the students, and so, you know, we hope to continue this dialogue with the teachers and, and find out what we can do to support this effort and, and to really make sure that it's, that we can shepherd it through to something meaningful.
Were there any, any roadblocks that they could come up with?
Time was-
Time was a big one.
Time was the biggest one, yeah.
And nobody really needs a meeting just for the sake of meeting.
No, absolutely not.
And I'd like to echo the doc's, uh, the sentiment there, this is, this is really an effort, that we really need to hear from the teachers what they need to make this work, because it's so obviously the right thing to do between both schools and throughout all of the kids', um, that their journey, this is a good and right thing to do, so we want to make sure that we provide whatever they need-
But we, we can't-
Because we know we need it.
Well, we need to know what they need, though, we can't provide what we, we aren't asked of them.
Right.
And, you know, so if they have suggestions, or, you know, what we can do to make this project, to make these successful, we need to know that, and we can work, we can work as part of that, working together for making it all better for our students.
Exactly.
Well, we give a lot of examples of some of the really neat things that have been done in the last few years in our school district, they've all been teacher-driven. You know, they-
There is a lot.
They've not been top-down directive, they've been teachers that have come up with ideas, and so that's what we encourage, and you would think that math and science would be, especially in the science area, would be the most creative people coming up with new ideas.
But sometimes, though, the math and sciences are some of the more stricter in the, you know?
You think? Yeah, I mean, yeah.
You know what I mean, though?
Yes.
I don't mean personally, I just mean the discipline itself.
That's correct.
You know, it's, it's, you know, you have your formulas, you have, you know, so it's kind of just-
There's a right and a wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Unlike us in social studies or-
Yep.
You know, the, the language arts people that are maybe a little more flexible.
So I'm, I'm expecting some good conversations coming forward.
Do we have another, um, meeting or anything planned? Is there any, or will it be looking at probably this August when they get back together? Do we have anything in the meantime?
Well, we did ask, we did ask that they come back, you know, to Joe and the board with some ideas, uh, you know, within a month, and so whether it happens, you know, we'd like to see some thought, you know, over the summer, you know, to try to implement, you know, some ideas for next year.
I mean, I think of this aviation course.
That's another example.
You know, I mean, it was just an idea, and I know a couple of years ago, it, it was kind of brought forth and it kind of got shot down before we real, before, I know before it came to my eyes what it was, and it's like, wow, you know, and now look at, we had a donation tonight for that, and, you know, somebody from our public said, "Hey, I will help you with this," and, you know, I think it's just wonderful, but I mean, it's just like, think out of that box, see how we can work together and, but I, we're all, I'm ready to listen for anything, and I, I'll be willing to help, uh, what I can do.
And while we're at the end of our fiscal year here, the other comment I'll make too, Julie, is something that this community has done so differently than any other community that I've seen, two things, one, the, the ability that we work so closely together with our private schools, our homeschool students, um, you don't see that in all districts, in all regions, I mean, we work with our Catholic school, our Lutheran school, our homeschool kids, we provide food service to St. Paul and St. John, that's unique. The other one that's unique, though, that I've really grown to appreciate, are the number of manufacturing areas here in our region that actually come into the school. As you know, you have to be 18 years of age to work in a factory in Minnesota, actually any place in the country, you have to be 18 years of age to be in a manufacturing. So we can't really go out there for internships, but the workers can come in, and they do, so they help with robotics, they help with, uh, welding, they help with, uh, construction trades, Jesse Walters has come in and helped with the greenhouse and agriculture, I mean, and so, and not every school district allows that, and we encourage it, but more importantly, we have wonderful members of our private sector that are willing to donate their hours to come in, and, and boy, that, what a difference that makes, because we can tell kids it's important to show up to school every day, but when someone from Avery Waytronic says, "If you miss three days in a year, we have to fire you."
Yep.
You know, that's an eye-opening experience for kids, and so we really do appreciate that.
I mean, I look back at the agricultural program, you know, it's kind of where it kind of started in that, and, you know, where have we gone from there? I mean, we have just grown leaps and, and bounds, and we've got a long ways that we can go and we can build that more.
We'll just, we'll just keep talking and-
Yep, and that's what we have to do, keep those lines of communication open so that we can do that, but, like I said, help us be that partner, and, you know, Nicole had a great comment too about people in the community, you know, coming to our committee, you know, you can come to the school board meetings, but really, the committees is where things happen, you know, that's where we make those decisions and that, it's just a format, I mean, you can still come to the board, means I don't mean you can't come, but coming to the, that's just kind of a formality, but coming to the committees where all the work takes place, and, you know, if you've got some suggestions, if you've got some way that you can help in our districts, come on, let, let, let us, you know, partner together.
Okay, we'll close on that.
Well, I, I just learned that on August 28th is when we come back together again, uh, the Minnesota Teacher of the Year, who is a Fairmont graduate, will be coming to our school that day-
Wonderful.
-to, uh, give it, to give a, an address.
August 28th, I gotta look to see if I got that day off.
I believe that's a Mon-
Tuesday.
It is a Tuesday.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
That was great. Thank you, we've had some great conversations tonight, and-
We went to appendix O, though.
Yeah.
Good after recovery.
But still, we only went hour and 15 minutes.
Well, we got your money's worth today. Okay.